City of Riverbank, Regular City Council, and Local Redevelopment Authority Meetings now in session. Today is Tuesday, July 26, 2016. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise. May I have the young man from the Scouts come on up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. Sorry, you came up here and I'm going to put you on the spot. And your name?
Ryan.
Ryan? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan.
You know, it is great to be living in this great United States of America, but we seem to be having some problems, some like they did many years ago. And when I was sitting at my desk, I happened to pull out something that sounded interesting, so bear with me, please. Two wolves. One evening, an old Cherokee Indian chief told his grandson about a battle that goes on inside all people. He said, "My son, the battle is between two wolves inside us all. One is evil. It is angry, envy, jealous, sorrow, regret, greed, self-pity, guilt, resentment, inferiority, lies, false pride, superiority, and ego. The other is good. It is joy, peace, love, hope, serenity, humility, kindness, benevolence, empathy, generosity, truth, compassion, and faith." The young grandson thought for about a minute, and then he asked the grandfather, "Which wolf wins?" The old Cherokee Indians simply replied, "The one you feed. Could we please pray? Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight. We come to you knowing that you've given us a great nation, a nation, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we're standing up tonight and praising you for. And we're asking you, Heavenly Father Jesus, to bless the people of this great nation. Be with them, Heavenly Father. We see so much going on, Heavenly Father. It seems like that it's once again almost like way back when, when it was brother against brother and war in among all. We just pray, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we can come together, come together as one huge family in Christ and unify. Come together, Heavenly Father Jesus, and stand for something other than just ourselves. We pray tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you'll bless each and every law enforcement officer and first responder, those, Heavenly Father Jesus, that go forth without asking a question. They run into whatever the battle might be or whatever the fire is raging to try to take out and save all humans. They don't ask you, Heavenly Father Jesus, your pedigree or nothing else. They just go forth and go after you. And we just pray tonight, Heavenly Father, that you could be with them. We pray tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you could unify this community, that we could come together, that we could come together in all different religions, all different faiths, come together believing in just one God, knowing, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you are the one, the ultimate one, the one that's going to make a decision, the one that's going to judge. Let us not judge, not, Heavenly Father, but let us be kind to each and every one. We ask that you bless the City Council, the council that you've given us, Heavenly Father, the ones, Heavenly Father Jesus, that's worked so hard and spent so many hours to make sure that this community is not only safe, but, Heavenly Father Jesus, that it's run in a proper manner. We ask that you be with the city manager, be with the staff, be with every employee of this city, that they might come together and unite as one. We ask you, Heavenly Father Jesus, to bless the churches of this community. Let them stand up, Heavenly Father Jesus, and preach your word. And we ask you tonight to be with us, each one, as we look into our soul and our heart and ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, if there's something that we need to ask you for, that you would grant it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council... Oh, excuse me. Consular Authority Member LeAnn Jones Cruz.
Here.
Consular Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Consular Authority Member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Chair, Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Agenda changes. I intend on adding one small section into the presentations. I'd like to do that first before we do the other ones. Conflicts of interest. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered to declare their conflict at this time. Do we have none? All right, I'd like Mr. Jones.
Up here, please. I'm going to pick on you. It's not only you, but it's a lot. On June 25, 1950, North Korea invaded the South and we almost lost it. South Korea owes a debt of gratitude, and they know it, to the United States and to men like you. Sir, from the President, congratulations.
Thanks, ma'am.
He thought he was in trouble. As he usually is.
Item 1.1, Stanislaus Business Alliance Presentation.
Mayor, Members of the City Council. This evening, we have Dave White, Executive Director of the Stanislaus Business Alliance, here to provide a presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Ms. Anderson, thank you so much for coming. I have a lot to say. I'll try to do this briefly and get it through quickly. But in the last year, our organization has gone through a major overhaul, and... Thank you. And I think the outcome is very positive for our county. It's very positive for Riverbank. And as I go through these slides, I think you'll see that where we're going is pretty exciting for our county. You'll notice on the first slide, we have a new name on there. It's called Opportunity Stanislaus. That is going to be the name that we will be called going forward. So we're going to de-emphasize the name Alliance, and we're going to be emphasizing the name Opportunity Stanislaus. I'll explain that in just a minute. Where do I point it? Can you just advance the slides for me? The thing is true about any presentation, there's always going to be some technological glitch.
This is a short brief.
While we're working out the technical difficulties, do you want to introduce the concepts?
Oh, sure. Okay. Well, to start, let me explain where we're going as an operation, as an organization. About a year ago, we became aware that the new Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which was passed by Congress in 2014, required that we all county, or most county workforce development... Okay, thank you. Most county workforce development dollars be contracted out to private enterprise. And as a result of that, it became clear, the way we were operated, the way we were set up before, we had the workforce staff, on our staff, as part of our 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization. It became clear that if we wanted to continue to provide workforce services to business, we had to separate from the county in order to do that. We had to contract out with the county. We had to compete with others for that county contract. And so we decided, our board decided, to separate and create a brand-new private organization that would be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and that we would bid on that workforce contract. Mr. Campbell was on our previous board, and we separated at the end of this last fiscal year. We also submitted a bid for the business services contract with the County Workforce Office. And we just found out that we won the bid. That'll be... That actually has to be approved by the County Workforce Board, a new board, on August 15th. But we were told that we have won that bid. And so we're excited about that. We're going to continue to provide workforce services, but as part of a contract. We established the new organization, Opportunity Stanislaus, as a public-private partnership, major support from the private sector. You can see that the board consists of executives from ENJ Gallo, Stanislaus Foods, Kaiser, Doctors Medical Center, Memorial, Sutter Gold, Kaiser Permanente, Pacific Southwest Container, and many others. And what's really been exciting, when I came on board two years ago, we had very little private sector support for this organization. And one thing I've learned over the years is that you need to really have public and private working together. We've had a lot of companies sitting on the sidelines and not really engaged in economic development. That has changed. Many of the companies, many of our large companies, the small companies alike, are now very engaged and invested in Opportunity Stanislaus. Our organization is going to continue to focus on four key areas: workforce development, business development, messaging, and innovation. We still have the Alliance Small Business Development Center as part of the organization, and we'll continue to provide services to small business. In workforce development, as I said, we just secured the county's business services contract. We'll continue to provide services on recruitments, job fairs, on-the-job training, and support from local industry. Last year, the last two years, we've made 500 calls on local companies, including about 50 calls in the City of Riverbank, both companies, large and small. We'll continue to provide those services, engage with companies, and triage what they need, and then connect them with the right resources within our organization to provide support. I mentioned that we have the SBDC to support small business. Our business development team will continue to provide services to help attract and help local companies grow. We also, because of the support of some of the larger manufacturers, we are establishing a workforce training center, which will be private-sector-driven, 12 weeks to a career, patterned after the Water Center in Everett, Washington, which was established by Boeing, to help train manufacturing skills to local people. This program, we're in the process of... Our chair for this program is Rick Coffey from ENJ Gallo, with other... With support from many other manufacturers. We also will continue the Careers in Manufacturing and Industry Program, which is a pipeline for high school kids to find careers locally with local manufacturers. One of our main sponsors and participants in that is Silken Container, which is a company right here in Riverbank. In business development, we will continue to focus on local business retention and expansion. Right now, we are working with a Riverbank company called Rebsco. Rebsco that is relocating their headquarters from Denver, Colorado, and we're working with them to help them recruit individuals and also to obtain grants and through the permitting process. So this is one fine company that, just as a local example. Our Track to California program is an effort to reach out to California companies in high-cost business areas that are being squeezed out because of cost, and we're hoping to help them find a safe landing here in Stanislaus County. Our costs are about 30% less than the Bay Area, for example. And we've had examples of companies like Scans of Candy that have come here from the Bay Area that wanted to maintain a presence in California and found a good soft landing in Stanislaus County. Our supply chain development program is to connect local suppliers to local end-users. We find that a lot of our manufacturers, a lot of our OEM companies, are using suppliers from all over the country and are not necessarily aware of some of the suppliers in their own backyard. And we are starting to make that connection. We'll develop an asset map that shows all those suppliers. And just to give you one anecdote, we were working with Large Canary here locally, and they were using a chemical company outside the state of California. We were able to let them... We informed them about a local chemical company that did the same thing, and now that company's in business with this local company. What that means is, it means more jobs, more opportunity here local for our companies. Also attracting suppliers to fill the gaps. We might have some gaps. We might have a need for a certain supplier that's not being filled locally. Also, our cluster economic development strategy, taking advantage of the companies and the industries that are here, growing, supporting, and communicating those clusters to the outside world so that people can pick up on the things that we do well. And looking to improve the economic ecosystem for our clusters. Just as an example of that, we've been working with our ag tech team, and one of the things we learned was that Stan State was not providing programs to the caliber or to the necessary level that is needed by local ag tech companies. So now we're working, we've connected ag tech with the Stan State programs. In messaging, one of the things we found as we went out and interviewed a lot of companies, and we talked to a lot of employers, they have a really hard time attracting talent to the area. If they're trying to recruit doctors, they're trying to recruit marketing professionals, other types of professionals that require advanced degrees, a lot of times, they have to recruit people from outside the region to come in. And what happens is, when they start recruiting them, they start doing a search on Google, and sometimes negative messaging comes up, and it scares them away a little bit. And so we're working very hard, and I'm going to show you a couple of slides on our website, we're working very hard to start providing positive messaging about our county. We have wonderful assets here, and also showcase that through our social media campaign and our new website. And just a couple of examples of our website. If you go onto our new website, OpportunityStanislaus.com, this is one of the features on the website. This is a very interactive regional map that shows basic programs and assets in our county, and we have a very good treatment of the City of Riverbank on there. If you click on the Riverbank icon, this is the first page you'll see. And then, as you scroll down, you'll find a lot of really cool and exciting material about Riverbank, including local restaurants, local recreation opportunities, local information about education and about demographics that people can use as they explore, not only the Riverbank, but all the cities in our county. And as you know, we have a memorandum of understanding with the City of Riverbank. And that memorandum of understanding includes many things. One is to continue work with the Galaxy Theater Development to attract new investment to the area. We've been working with some of the local developers in that area to find potential uses and potential investors. Work with local Riverbank employers to help with expansions, workforce needs, and other needs. Partner with Riverbank staff and the Riverbank Industrial Complex to recruit new companies. Work with Riverbank staff to recruit retailers to crossroads and other commercial areas. I'm happy to say that a couple of years ago, we, our staff, went to the ICSC conference in Las Vegas and also to Monterey. And a couple of the companies that we talked to at that time were Five Guys, and we've also talked to Chick-fil-A. And I believe there's still an opportunity to get Chick-fil-A to Riverbank. It's a perfect location for them. But Five Guys is here. Now, I'm not saying that we were the only reason they came, but having those touches by different people representing this county makes a difference, and we'll continue to do so. And then helping Riverbank staff in the city branding effort. So, I didn't want to take too much time, but I do know you might have some questions about our new organization. We have a new private board. We are not subject to the Brown Act. We have about 70% of our fundraised dollars are private now. That's an exact flip-flop of how it used to be. It used to be 30/70. Now it's 70% private, 30% public, which is really good because now we're getting these companies on board. We still do provide services by contract and through MOU to government entities. We'll continue to do that. And we will continue to invite all of our investors, including our public investors, to come to all of our board meetings and be there and make yourself known. We have an event scheduled for August 9th. Did you receive an invitation? Who'd received an invitation to that? I hope somebody did. Okay. To that event, we're going to, as a celebration event, about the close of our campaign, and we hope you can come. So are there any questions that you have? I'd be happy to entertain those.
Get an invite?
Well, we send them to the city manager with the expectation that that will be passed on to the council and the mayor. So maybe Jill didn't understand that, but if you would pass it on...
I have been ignoring her. She's been telling me.
If she didn't pass it on, it's my fault. So I didn't make that clear.
So now that I'm aware that that is the process, that was not clear in the invitation, but be happy to pass that on to the council.
So that's my fault for not making that clear.
Are there any questions? Anybody from the public wish to ask questions? So thank you. I look forward to the new and improved, or the... Not the new and improved, the absolutely new Opportunity Stanislaus, and see what that can bring to this region.
We hope that we'll bring wonderful things to Riverbank, and so please hold us accountable. That's what, if you look at our case statement about our new organization, it's all about accountability, and we mean to produce results. Thank you very much.
Item 1.2.
Mayor, Members of the City Council. It's my pleasure to introduce Arlene Figueroa, who's been the Chair of the City's Budget Advisory Committee. That committee is formed every year to look at the budget line item by line item, and they provide a set of recommendations. I'd also like to compliment Maricela Garcia, who is the staff liaison to that committee, for the work that she has done as well. So, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council, I am Arlene Figueroa, and I'm here to read you our recommendations. The Budget Advisory Committee has been meeting on a monthly and sometimes bimonthly basis with the goal of formulating recommendations for the council that should be taken into consideration, that may provide the city with solutions to close current and future budget deficits. Having reviewed all of the department budgets over the past several months, the committee has now formulated recommendations that will allow the city to work towards presenting a balanced budget, currently and in the future. The recommendations that are being presented to you hope to create a long-term impact on the city's budget, thereby allowing the city to balance its budget and not depend on reserves to cover ongoing expenses. In addition, several of these recommendations are made with the intention that the city is fiscally prudent when procuring services or purchasing equipment from vendors. Recommendation number one, the City of Riverbank should explore the feasibility of developing a resolution or an ordinance that would establish no parking days on days which the street sweeper is scheduled to clean a street. The city could consider establishing a fine for any violations of the no parking day. Rationale is establishing no parking days, the days when the street sweeper is scheduled to clean a street, would serve two purposes. A would increase the efficiency with which the street sweeper cleans our streets to remove any debris that could make its way into our storm drains. And B, the city would increase its revenues by establishing a fine for any violations of the resolution or ordinance for residents who do not obey the no parking day. With this recommendation, the committee hopes to be able to provide city council an ideal that would provide a more balanced budget and that would help the long-term financial stability of the city. Sincerely, the Budget Advisory Committee Chair, Arlene Figueroa, Vice Chair Anthony McKinney, Committee Member Evelyn Halbert, Committee Member Cindy Fossey, Committee Member Daniel Park, City Council LeAnn Jones Cruz, City Council Member Janine Tucker. Questions?
In some of the other areas that we got looked at or you have looked at, did you come up with any ideas on contractors, who we contract services out to?
Yes. We have actually looked at or suggested that the city would look into contracting with some of our local contractors or lease offering the bids out to the local services.
Or put out a request for bids on other services that we do? Okay. Anything else?
Questions?
Questions? Anyone from the public wish to ask questions? Truly, I want to thank the Budget Advisory Committee. For the last five years, this Budget Advisory Committee has done great work, from its inception to even today. You look at each line item, you make sure that we... You are our watchdogs, making sure that, you know, we don't become extravagant or stupid, one of the two. So thank you very much. I want to thank you and your committee.
Thank you.
Item 2, Public Comments. No action can be taken. At this time, member of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject-mattered jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comments tonight? Come on, Ryan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, Ms. Anderson. Great to see you all. I haven't been here in a little while. I'm Angie Timponi from Riverbank. And this is Eric Humphries, also from Riverbank, and his son Ryan, as you know. We are here today to represent the Riverbank Cub Scout PAC-10 and the Boy Scout Troop 1100. As you know, we have a couple of active groups of scouts here in Riverbank. The PAC has been active for a little over five years now, and the troop for about three years. So, and just to clarify, the PAC is first through fifth graders, and the troop is for boys in sixth grade up to age 18. So that's the differentiate, you know, they get confused sometimes troops and packs and who's in which one. We have positively impacted around 100 boys since the inception of the PAC about five years ago. And some of those boys have graduated on to the troop and are now active in our Boy Scout troop. And we recently have had a few challenges. There's been a little talk of our Cub Scout PAC dissolving here in Riverbank, which is a bit alarming to us and hopefully to members of the community as well. A couple of things have been an issue recruitment. We've had some little bit of declining enrollment. We need new boys to join each year and kind of come up through the ranks. And so this last year, we did not have any first graders or second graders. And so this year, we're starting out with no second or third graders, and so we'd need a little assistance with recruitment. We are working as a PAC to focus on that and try to come up with creative ways to get the word out and recruit new boys and let families know. I see sometimes on the Crossroads Facebook page, people will post, "Is there Cub Scouts anywhere?" And people just don't know that we're around, so...
We've had recruitment through the schools in the area. However, Sylvan School District is... Well, in particular, Crossroad School was one of our biggest... Most of our boys came from Crossroad School. But in the last, was it, two years, it's been more difficult to get our information into the school, so...
Absolutely. A lot of red tape there.
Yeah, a lot of red tape.
So... The other issue that we're having is a suitable meeting space. Most PACs and troops meet at churches or other community-type buildings, and they're usually connected to a service organization or a church that sponsors them. We currently, both the PAC and the troop, are sponsored by the Knights of Columbus, which is the service organization that's out of St. Francis Catholic Church. So they've been wonderful. We love partnering with them. They help us with spaghetti feeds, and we help them with Mother's Day breakfast, and it's been a great partnership. The challenge is that that church is so busy and has so many activities that they're having trouble providing us with the space that we need on a weekly basis for those boys to meet.
They've grown quite a bit over the last five years.
Yeah, the church has... They're just, their calendar of using that hall and the classrooms and different spaces they have available is really, really limited for us. So an idea that we've had is the Scout Hall. We get asked, you would not believe how many times we get asked, "How come you guys don't meet at Scout Hall? You're scouts, and you don't meet at the Scout Hall." And we don't really have a great answer for that. Other than that, it doesn't belong to the scouts anymore. We believe it did at one point when it was built, and then it was donated to the city. And so we don't have the ability to meet there without paying fees that we're not able to afford as a PAC.
However, last Christmas, we did use it...
Yes.
For a Christmas party, and it turned out great.
It was a great, it's a great location for us. So we're basically here to say we'd like to partner with the city more. Our boys have been involved in various things from State of the City address to Christmas Parade, the Christmas Festival, the Haunted Hay Ride. Love Riverbank. They really love getting involved in the different activities. And so we want to continue that partnership. We'd like to maybe propose a meeting, if possible, to further talk about ways we could partner more closely, and, and definitely, we would like to open discussions about using Scout Hall for a reduced fee, or if there's a way our boys could provide regular community service in exchange for using Scout Hall. That would be, that would be even better. But we really definitely need, we need that assistance. And I want to read one thing really quick, and then we'll be done, unless Eric wants to add other things. But as you probably can guess, boys being involved in scouting is a very positive influence in their lives and also contributes to the community. And so they've done some studies on men who were involved in scouts and boys who are involved in scouting, and what that leads to. And I'm just going to read a little, a little part from the study. It says, "Compared with men who were never scouts, men who were scouts five or more years as youth are more satisfied with their present lives and occupations, have sustained lifelong friendships, and place a higher value on family relationships. Men who were scouts also earn higher incomes, achieve higher levels of education, and attend religious services more often than men who were never scouts. Boys who are or were scouts also agree that scouting is a positive influence in their life. Scouting has helped them gain self-confidence, leadership skills, determination, and social interaction skills. Scouting has also impacted their academic skills. Scouting activities have helped scouts improve their reading, science, engineering, physical fitness, and emergency preparedness skills. In addition, boys who are scouts report earning higher grades than boys who were never scouts. Current and former scouts are more active and have a wider range of interests than boys who have not been scouts. They tend to watch less television than other boys, and engage in more extracurricular activities such as fine arts hobbies and school clubs. Scouts are also more likely to make the most ethical decisions, not the easiest. Scouts are more likely to volunteer to be a leader, practice responsible recycling procedures, and take part in community service. They are also more likely to report a classmate with a gun, and are less likely than non-scouts to drink alcohol." So, we want to keep these scouts going in Riverbank. We don't want the PAC to fold. We want to keep growing it. And we would just really like to partner more closely with the city to help us with that and see these scouts really grow and flourish and continue to thrive here.
All right. Any, any kind of talks we can have with the city in, with the intent to keep this PAC rolling forward, keep Troop 1100 rolling forward, is really our intent. I've been, I've been Cub Master for three years.
I think so.
Prior to that, it was your husband, Joe, and it's been an honor.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you.
Any, any questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 3, Consent Calendar. Consistent of item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of October 15th, 2015 Special City Council Minutes. Item 3B1, approval of November 4th, 2015 Special City Council Minutes. Item 3B2, approval of May 23rd, 2016, we're getting closer, City, Special City Council Minutes. Item 3C, response to the finding of the 2016 Stanislaus County Civil Grand Jury. Item 3D, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank authorizing the submittal of the annual program income report for the Community Development Block Grant Program Income revolving loan account funds. Item 3E, a resolution authorizing the submittal of the 2015-16 Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, annual performance report. Item 3F, affirming the need for the August 9th, 2016 City Council Meeting. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of the consent items? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on or pull any of the consent items? Seeing none, I bring it back to the city council for a recommendation and/or action.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, the consent calendar.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 51, a resolution approving the submittal of an application for funding and execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto for the 2016 funding year of the State Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mayor, members of the city council, Maricela Garcia, Director of Finance, will be presenting this report. It has been a project, though, that has involved multiple departments. And, and so, while she is leading the charge tonight, a lot of people were involved, including Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. So tonight, we do have for you the information regarding our application submittal to the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDVG as it's more commonly known. As the city manager mentioned, this definitely was a collaboration amongst a variety of departments. So many thanks to Sue Fitzpatrick, to Donna Kinney, Kathleen Klick, and to Rosa Casas, as we will be submitting a grant that includes projects that will benefit more residents than we've had in the past. And so, some of the basics of the notice of funding availability that CDVG provided to all of the non-entitlement cities here in the state of California is that there is 27 million available in federal funding. Some of the eligible activities and projects include housing assistance, public facilities, infrastructure and infrastructure in support of housing, public services, and planning and technical assistance. And so, our application submittal will include a housing rehabilitation program, our first-time homebuyer assistance program. We'll also be submitting, for the first time, applications for the public facilities activities, which will be geared towards the renovation of our community center, and an application for the public improvement activities, which will include ADA improvements throughout the city of Riverbank. And so, our total grant application will be for $2 million. And that does include some administration funds as well. So for our housing rehabilitation program, we were successfully awarded grants in 2003, 2004, 2010, and 2013 towards this program. For our 2013 grants, we've been able to assist four families in the rehabilitation of their home. We've provided ADA improvements, mostly to seniors here in our, in our town. Our 2016 grant request is for $500,000 to go towards the program, with $465,000 of that available to, to loan. Our first-time homebuyers assistance program, we were awarded grant funds in 2004 and 2013, and we've been able to assist five families. We are requesting a grant amount of $500,000, with 465 of that being available to offer as loans to our first-time homebuyers who want to relocate to Riverbank. Our public facilities activities, which is a new activity that we will be applying for, we'll be looking at renovations to our community center, and the grant amount we're requesting is $600,000. And that does include about $41,000 in general administration funds. The renovation will include flooring replacement, kitchen upgrades, roof repairs, HVAC upgrades, lighting, ADA upgrades. And the proposed renovations would improve the quality of life of our seniors who currently attend our senior lunch program. It's currently being used by the Golden Ager's, we're there. And so we, we would see the benefit to that specific age bracket in terms of the needs that we need to fill. And this is just a copy of the plan that the city council did review along with our Parks and Recreation Director, Sue, and, which was approved last fiscal year. The second activity we'll be applying for is public improvements, and we'll be looking at ADA sidewalk improvements. We're requesting $400,000 towards that. We'll be replacing substandard handicap ramps in the areas from, on 8th Street, from Patterson to Belgian, on 1st Street, from Topeka to Stanislaus, on Santa Fe, from Stanislaus, to Stanislaus from 5th to 7th Street, Stanislaus from Estella to Jackson, and then Jackson from Stanislaus to Parsley. And so, all of these ADA improvements that we would be making were identified in our ADA transition plan, which was adopted in January. And so, our recommendation for tonight is that you do open the public hearing to receive any public comments on our proposed grant application, and then adopt a resolution which would authorize the staff to submit this application and execute a grant agreement if we are awarded. And I'm available for any questions, as well as the rest of the staff.
This is a public hearing? Seeing no public input, we close the public hearing. Bring it back to the city council. For item 5.1, that is the, a motion to approve the submittal of the application for funding and execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto from the 2016 funding year of the State Community Development Block Grant Program.
I make a motion that we accept item 5.1 as stated.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the resolution of item 5.1 and a second.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 5.2, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank approving and adopting a five-year capital improvement plan, CIP, for fiscal year 2016 through 2021.
Yes, and Mayor members of the city council, Kathleen Klick will be presenting an overview of the CIP for 2016, 2021. And again, this is another effort of multiple members of the staff. So you'll see a lot of, a lot of work has gone into this, this relatively short presentation. So thank you to Kathleen for leading the charge on this one.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I'm going to present the fiscal year 2016, 2021 Capital Improvement Program. What I'm going to do is go through the projects for fiscal year 1617 and 1718. So the recommendation tonight is that the council review and provide input on the proposed CIP projects for fiscal year 2016, 2021. If acceptable to council, adoption of the five-year capital improvement plan is recommended. So the CIP is not a budget document, but rather, it's a planning tool that we use in our office. Whenever there's grant opportunities that come up, and we have those projects listed, and some of them we need funding for, we could look at that CIP and see if we fit into any of those grant opportunities. So it's a work-in-progress document to show transparency to the projects, to the project staff as currently managing, planning, researching, funding, and finding funding sources. So each project requires a specific implementation and financing plan, possible environmental review, and at times, collaboration with other agencies. Each project within the CIP requires specific city council action at each major milestone. So the CIP is broken up into eight different sections. So the upcoming CIP projects, and the presentation tonight will highlight those for 1617 and 1718. Some of the capital items highlighted in this PowerPoint currently have no funding sources identified. We are constantly looking for those funding sources. They are in the CIP to inform council and also the residents that these projects are in a priority, and staff will be diligently looking for available funding sources to cover the costs. So we'll start off with the street projects for 1617 and 1718. So for 1718, we have slated 220,000 LTF funds to continue our sewer seal and street maintenance programs. ADA improvements, this year, we have requested the 50,000 for ADA improvements. We've been doing this, I believe, for the past three or four years. And then we're going to be requesting 50,000 again for 1718. The Stanislaus County project, intersection improvements at Rozelle and Clarabelle. The environmental studies, the county has informed me that the environmental studies are completed and currently being reviewed by Caltrans. The next phase is the right-of-way acquisition and construction. And they have construction scheduled for spring, summer of 2018. Signal at Rozelle and Patterson and pedestrian railroad crossing, sidewalk infill along Rozelle and Patterson. Environmental studies are complete and currently being reviewed by Caltrans. In process of completing the preliminary engineering, right-of-way, and utility relocation. And we have slated construction for this project for, hopefully, the latest summer of 2017. Bicycle lane striping is being conducted right now, and that's on Claus Road. And that should be finished here within a few weeks. Patterson Road sidewalk infill from 1st Street to Claus Avenue on the south side. We have preliminary engineering, environmental, and construction, and that will be starting this fiscal year. Morel Road overlay, this project is currently out to bid. So the construction on that should begin here in September. Rozelle Avenue, Morel Road intersection improvements. We have our preliminary engineering and environmental scheduled for 1617. So in October, when we get the go-ahead, we can begin looking at that area and trying to develop a design. And then the construction funds and right-of-way are available in 1718. Rozelle Avenue sidewalk, right-of-way, drainage, and ADA improvements. Patterson Road to Pocket. This project, preliminary engineering, environmental, right-of-way, and construction will begin this year. Oakdale Road overlay from Patterson Road to Silver Rock. And that is slated to begin in 2017, 2018. Railroad crossing improvements. We're looking at completing this at 1st Street, looking at fiscal year 1718. Right now, there's currently no crossing there. We're, we need some sidewalks. So that's slated for 1718. So, storm drain projects. 7th Street outfall repair. Design and construction to permanently repair the damaged outfall due to destabilized embankment. And these funds are to be determined, but we have an estimated cost of $250,000 for that. Storm drain outfall improvements at Candlewood. And to study the 8th Street storm drain system are both to be determined as far as storm. As you know, we don't have funds coming in for storm. It basically comes out of our general fund. But we are, we are diligently looking for funds to complete these projects. Sewer system projects. Cross connection reduction program, so smoke test sanitary sewer collection systems to find and eliminate cross connections. This was identified in our sewer rate study that was done. These are also projects that were identified in the sanitary sewer pipe, or in the sewer rate study. Sanitary sewer pipe replacements. There's five there that need to be replaced, and those are slated for 1718. Waste water treatment projects. Resurface the entry road. I know you've probably seen this a few different times. We're looking for funding for this, but the current road needs to be repaired. It goes into the wastewater treatment plant. And then the wastewater treatment plant completion of Pond 9. It's slated for 1718, and our funding source is looking for funds for that as well. Water projects. A mobile structure building was requested for the building for offices and for the water department personnel. This is going to be brought to you, I believe, at mid-year. So I left it in the CIP. If there is no funding for it at this time, it would have to be approved at mid-year. If there is no funding for it at this time, it would have to be approved at mid-year.
Didn't they have a temporary building out there prior to the construction of a permanent one?
Michael's not here. I don't have an answer for that. I apologize.
One more, that was at the sewer. I don't know what happened to that one.
The one at the waste, the water treatment plant, that one was tore down. Yeah, that-
So it was very temporary.
Water line replacements, Third Street alley, and then what, there's a main replacement, the alley between Third and Eighth, and those will be funded from the water, the water rate study that was done, and these are slated for 1718. Also, the water main installation at Oakdale Road and water line connection at Prospectors Parkway to Clarabelle and Rozelle. Motor pool and equipment, we have vehicle replacement and a loader that Public Works will be asking for in fiscal year 1718. Building facilities, the Sheriff's Building, the HVAC, we have slated for 1718 to replace the aged HVAC unit at the Sheriff's Building. Community Center, replace aged HVAC unit for 1617, and then Community Center renovation project estimated at 500,000. And hopefully, if we can get those CDBG funds, then we can move that along sooner. Building facilities identified for ADA improvements, we have some ADA improvements at the teen center, City Hall South, or City Hall North, Community Center, Sheriff's Building, and the Scout Hall. And those were all identified in our ADA transition plan, and we are continuing to look for funding to complete those projects. Parks and Recreation projects, Parks Master Plan, I have that in fiscal year 1718, and I know Sue is looking for funds to complete that. Crossroads and Homewood Basin, benches, tables, baseball, backstop, and ADA improvements are slated for this year. Community Dog Park, have fiscal year 1718. A lot of the funds for that would be targeted through fundraising. Community Center pool renovations, we have slated for 1718, and I know Sue is looking for funds for that as well. Sports Complex Booster Pump, and also Jacob Myers Park, Phase III amphitheater and parking. Parks and Recreation identified ADA improvements, we have Rotary Park, Silva Park, which will be done this year. Sorenson Park and Harless Park will also be completed this year. Zarillo Park will be completed this year, and we have Jacob Myers Park, which was a general fund, so we are looking for funding for improvements there. Castleburg Park, and as well as the Community Center Pool. So tonight, the council, if you could review, and if you have any questions or comments for me.
Before I open it to a public hearing, some of these could be resolved with a gas tax or a sales tax approval for the roads.
Road improvements, yes.
I know sidewalks and ADA improvements also included in that. Is there a boundary where, let's say, for the pool, is it just access onto the sidewalk, or it wouldn't be all the way through in the pool?
No, no.
All right. Any other comments, questions? This is a public hearing?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ramon Bermudez from Rozelle Avenue. And I have a couple of questions about the sidewalks for Sierra Street coming from, coming from the main road on, on 108 onto Railroad Avenue. From there, turns into Patterson Road. And on the time so school and rainy season has been very hard for many students that come to Cardoso School, go to Riverbank High School, and so on. And it is muddy, it's ugly, very slippery, and so on. I was wondering what can be done about that area for sidewalks on Sierra onto Railroad, coming, coming east, and then turns into Railroad going south, and then back east onto Patterson Road. It is very important for the safety of these students. And also, on the drainage at Palmer and Patterson Road, of the, doesn't, doesn't work in the rainy season. It got really ugly, you needed a boat and your horse to bring along with you in order to cross through there. You get to see a couple of cars that were stuck because the water got more likely under them. And so, I just wanted to know if in the plans ahead, the plans for the future, 2016, 2017, and 2017 to 2018, if they will have to wait that long, if you could put it in a priority basis, so we all don't have to suffer that part. On the parts of, I talked to Ms. Klick a little bit about it, of the improvement that there were in the roads, congratulations, it was, it was a majority of the roads in the City of Riverbank. I don't know if you read in the newspaper, there's some of the comments that streets on the crossroad were not needed, but they still went ahead and spent some money on them and were over it of something that was good enough for two or three more years. But yet, Sierra, east and west of the railroad tracks was not taken care of at all. Second Street from 108 going south to Topica, to Santa Fe, to Stanley Laus, it's been very many years since anything, you can, you can drive or walk through there, you can see the road of Stritos, Topica, from 108 to Eighth Street. Santa Fe has been really neglected for many years. You can go and check it out, also take a walk from Claus Road coming west onto Eighth Street, and then continue on to all the way to Cardoso School. If there is funding for something that you didn't need on the street, that you didn't need to do any slashing, but yet, you don't have, then I think that you need a little bit better balance of those funds to put where is needed, rather than where it wasn't needed, and I thank you very much.
This is a public hearing? Say no further public comment. I bring it back to the City Council. The comment made on some of those streets that were, that are dis-repaired beyond slurry seal, they, there are requirements, that if you touch a street that has certain amount of value to it, I have to do the complete streets, that is ADA improvement, and there isn't the funding for that. Now, comments that there are certain parts of this city that did not need that, that is not correct. What we're trying to do is maintain what we have, and when we get the funding through either the initiative coming on up this November, or however we get the funding, we can apply the full funding to do the complete street, not just a quarter of a mile, and take away all the funding. So that will happen when we get the funding from either the state and federal, or through our own initiative in this November. And as I've stated before, a lot of these programs, or a lot of these improvements can be done if we take it upon ourselves to take a look at the November ballot of local streets. And if you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to sit down and discuss it. But we have a nice little poster that directs you on how you can learn more about it, and if you take a look at where we have it on our map. Some of those comments you made, sir, are part of our initiative once this goes through. The City of Riverbank has a map that'll include a lot of those areas. So I bring it back to the City Council for action of, to approve the resolution for the CIP for fiscal year 2016 to 2021.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept agenda item 5.2 in accepting the resolution for the five-year capital improvement plan for 2016.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve 5.2 CIP and the resolution, and a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And so, keep those comments, Mr. Bermudez, we will make sure that we identify or address what you, what you said tonight through Kathleen Klick, okay? And we, we do know what needs to be done, we do know what our limitations are, and we're trying to get the funding, okay? Item 6.1, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California approving the adoption of the updated 2016 emergency operation plan for the City of Riverbank.
Yes, Mayor members of the City Council, this evening, we are presenting to you the updated emergency operations plan. This has been a project that has been being worked on for many, many months in cooperation with the Office of Emergency Services. Norma Torres-Manriquez has been the point person for the City of Riverbank, working with all of the departments and the police chief as well. And tonight, we are pleased to have representatives from the Office of Emergency Services to present an overview of the county effort, and with a specific focus on the City of Riverbank. So we, tonight, please welcome Chief Holly and Chris Holmer from the Office of Emergency Services.
City Council, thank you for having us here. I'll just go over a couple of things before Chris gets into our presentation. We at the Office of Emergency Services, we really kind of strive on three words that we have, it's communicate, coordinate, and collaborate. And that's what we've been doing with this plan here. We've worked really well. Norma has done tons of work on your behalf, and Chris is, is probably the resident expert at EOPs. She's did most of the work on our county EOP, and she's available to all the cities to assist with their EOPs. And she's done a wonderful job, so I just want to publicly thank her. So, a couple of things, Office of Emergency Services that we do, this is just one of many things that we do with the, the emergency operations plan. We're also in the process of working on our hazard mitigation plan, which is the county version that we're working on currently. And then, similar to how we've done with the EOP, we'll come up with a really good template, and we like to hand that off to the cities so that they, they have a good template to work off of and try and make your jobs a lot easier when you're working through it. We've been, for years, just working on our, our preparedness, our prevention, the mitigation strategies, and then this year, we got to put into place several times the response and recovery. I started here in the county Office of Emergency Services about a year and a half ago. We haven't had a tornado in this county for about 15 years, and when I've been the on-call or the, the on-duty, we've had three. So, fair warning, I'm on-call this week and next week. But it doesn't seem to be a lot of rain coming up, so we're probably going to be okay. And those, those three, we had, obviously, the De Niere tornado was the most destructive of the three. We had one in series that actually went unreported on 911. The only reason we knew is because we have a really good working relationship, and we collaborate with the National Weather Service, and they actually called us. And through social media, we were able to confirm that it was a tornado by pulling together some of the pictures of the damage in the, in the video. And then the last one we had was out in Waterford. So we hope not to do that the next year. I'd like to just go off-call for the winter time. I'm sure many people would appreciate it, but we'll see. Chris is going to give, kind of give you an overview of the, the EOP and what's gone into work on it. We've done just a ton of work with it, and we hope that it works out for you guys and as a plan, something to reference. You know, we, we would like to, once this goes through, to have you guys, or have you guys host us to come out and exercise the plan in a tabletop scenario, and that's very important. A lot of times, we get these, these plans, and the first one was about that thick, and we've actually brought it down to maybe about three inches now for the county-wide plan. And a lot of people use it as a doorstop or something to, on their, their desk, and we really want to just get through and exercise it. So afterwards, we'll coordinate with Norma, and we'll get through, and we'll have something specific to your city that we can go through and exercise the plan. Once we've exercised it, we go back and we review it, because we'll always find something that, that just isn't quite up to what we want it to be, so.
Can I give you a scenario?
Sure.
Underneath the City of Riverbank is a nine-foot diameter pipe coming from Hetch Hetchy with tremendous volume and tremendous pressure. If there should be a break, oh, not only does it go down the hill, it goes back up the hill. So if you have a break in the City of Riverbank, you now have this flooding coming from both directions until such time they can secure the valve.
Both sides. Yeah, that's a great scenario.
And, and it goes right underneath some houses.
You've got some work. Just so you know, we'll, we'll work it together, so. Yeah, absolutely, we can put that together.
I went through a lot of your incidents, and I didn't see that one.
That, that is not a common incident.
No, it won't be.
I can do a tornado for you off the top of my head, if you'd like. So, yeah, and we can do floods. And, you know, I'll just hit that really quick before Chris comes up here. We did secure a Department of Water Resources, DWR, flood grant for the Mid-Sado-Wakin area, which is the San Joaquin River that runs between county line and county line between Merced and San Joaquin. The grant is specific to that area, but it's that next step closer to us to get a full county-wide flood plan. It does impact you guys in one way or another, because if there's flooding in the San Joaquin County, or the San Joaquin River area, it will back up along the Tuolumne and the Stanislaus as well. So that's one of the things that we're working on. Chris?
Oh, good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm going to go over the emergency operations plan first, and then I have some handouts for you, which I'll go over after I talk about this. But first, I want to say thank you to Norma, who has done a tremendous amount of work on this plan. I don't think it would be where it is today without Norma, so thank you, Norma. Okay, so this is where we are. Your emergency operations plan revision is consistent with FEMA, and there are Comprehensive Planning Guide, CPG 101, and as it states, "The process of planning is just as important as the resulting document." So the whole process of putting it together is where we put our focus on this revision. And reviewing and revising the EOP is a continuous process as lessons are learned, new information, and insights are obtained, and priorities are updated. Okay, so this is this nice little graphic that they give us, which tells us the steps that we went through. We formed the core and expanded planning teams, we identified threats and hazards and assessed the risks, we determine goals and objectives, we developed the course of action, identifying resources and identifying information and intelligence needs, writing the plan, reviewing the plan, approving and disseminating the plan, and then finally, exercising and reviewing and revising and maintaining the plan. It's a lot like the Golden Gate Bridge, you get to the end, and you go back to the beginning, and you start all over again. It's a continual process. So this is the third time I've gone through this with, with the county and with the cities. So you'd think I'd be pretty good at it by now. Okay, so Stanislaus County began updating their EOP in December of 2014 this time around, following the CPG and assembling our core planning team made up of department directors. In January 2015, an expanded planning team, which included representatives from the whole community, including the nine cities, met to provide input pertaining to their roles and their responsibilities addressed in the plan. Once completed, it was reviewed by our liaison with the CalOES group up in Sacramento, and they wanted to make sure that- they wanted to make sure that we addressed all of the areas that are outlined in the state crosswalk, as well as the CPG requirements. On April 15, 2015, Stanislas County City Disaster Council and the Stanislas County Operational Area Council approved us to form the 2015 Stanislas County Emergency Operations Plan and recommended its adoption by the Stanislas County Board of Supervisors. The Stanislas County EOP was adopted on September 22, 2015, and is now being used as a template for all nine cities developing their own individual emergency operations plans. So this was our, our plan development timeline. It's a little small, it's hard to see there. On December 2, 2015, the county held a kickoff meeting with all of the city emergency managers and provided guidance to assist in the completion of your EOP. Cities were encouraged to meet with their core planning teams, which Norma did with all of department heads and police chief, and with the whole community to assist in the development of their EOP. So, Riverbank's EOP is based on the National Incident Management System, NIMS, and its component parts, along with the California Standardized Emergency Management System, NIMs, and it addresses the planned response to extraordinary emergency situations associated with natural or human-caused disasters, technological incidents, and national security emergencies affecting the City of Riverbank. Specifically, it identifies the policies, responsibilities, and procedures required to protect the health and safety of Riverbank residents, public and private property, and the environmental effects of natural and technological emergencies and disasters. It establishes the operational concepts and procedures associated with initial response operations, which is field response to emergencies, the expanded response operations, the City Emergency Operations Center, EOC, activities, and the recovery process. It sets forth lines of authorities and organizational relationships and shows how actions will be coordinated, it facilitates multi-agency and multi-jurisdictional coordination, and an all-hazards, all-threats incident response. Government at all levels, private sector, non-governmental organizations, and individual citizens partner to provide a shared and effective response and create a resilient community in recovery. It assigns responsibility to departments and organizations for carrying out specific actions that exceed routine responsibility at projected times and places during an emergency. It uses as its foundation the framework for the implementation of the California Standardized Emergency System, that's NIMs, and Emergency Management System, and for the City of Riverbank, and it complies with and integrates with the National Incident Management System, NIMS, and the concepts related to local government emergency management, including coordination with federal, state, and local agencies and jurisdictions, as well as non-governmental entities. So your plan consists of the basic plan, the glossary and acronyms, the attachments, and the emergency support functions. You may notice that it is smaller than your previous version. I think that this one is this big, and the one before was about this big. And some of the information, where did that information go? Much of it was removed and placed in separate plans, and this allows this plan to be suitable for publication on your website if you choose. It points to where the additional plans and the information are located, so that you know where to find this information. Okay, so let's take a little look at the emergency support functions. Riverbank's EOP includes 10 emergency support functions, ESFs, which correlate with the state emergency functions and the federal emergency support functions. There are four that are coordinated by the City of Riverbank, Public Works, Fire and Rescue, Emergency Management, and Law Enforcement. The remaining seven are coordinated by the county. The ESFs are designed to bring together disciplined, specific stakeholders which possess common interest and share a level of responsibility for emergency management. So the benefits of this revision of this EOP include community and partner involvement in the planning, increasing the effectiveness of the plan in the event of an emergency, standardized framework and content. The city's been developing an Emergency Operations Center management team for the purpose of being able to draw from a pool of trained individuals who could work at the EOC if needed during a major disaster. Having a standardized document that is familiar across the county and throughout all of the cities is crucial when responding to a jurisdiction other than your own. Norma, and Marcella, and Michael Riddell are all members of the Emergency Operations Center management team, and they know that if they're called to go to the City EOC, or perhaps Turlock, or the City of Patterson, that their plan is going to look very similar to the one that Riverbank is adopting, and they can hit the ground running. So this is a really, a real plus, I believe. So again, your plan is NIMS and NIMs compliant, which is required to receive homeland security, grant funding, and possible reimbursement from state and federal government after an emergency or disaster. And your plan is consistent with the state emergency plan. There we go. So completion of this plan and adoption by the Riverbank City Council is a key component to assuring the health, safety, and resiliency of the City of Riverbank. And once again, it also ensures that in the event of any natural or man-made disaster, the city would be eligible for emergency relief funding from the state and/or federal government. Okay, so that's all that I have on my, is there any questions on the plan that I can answer for you?
We have, you are our representative?
Yes.
And notice in the, I'll only add the mayor, it's Barbara Martinez, who we selected to represent us during the emergencies. So does that, that doesn't change it, because we can change it.
You mean the Disaster Council?
Right.
Right.
On the council.
The Disaster Council is, is a separate body that reviews the plans and approves them as to form before they go to the elected officials to adopt.
During an emergency of Riverbank, she would be our contact at the EOC, as well as?
Not necessarily.
As, as well as the management, emergency management.
She would be part of the policy group if you chose to send her as your policy person. A lot of it depends on who's available and who's there. If there's something that's affecting the City of Riverbank, and would you want to talk about tags and MACs and?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
So they, you would be the policy representative?
Yes, she would.
So there would be a policy and operations section of it. So Norma and the other people that have been on the emergency management team would be represented at the EOC itself. Usually, the policy group is in a separate place, because it gets really busy and loud and crazy, and we want the policymakers to be able to make those, the proper, the proper calls in an emergency. And we put the, I like to put them together in a quiet place where they can discuss and get all the information from all the outlets and not just the EOC. So that's where you would be a portion of that.
Where is that physically located?
Depending on the location of the emergency, it's not a set spot. So if the emergency was here in Riverbank and it was affecting Riverbank as a whole, it might be in Oakdale, it might be at our county center, it might be in Modesto or Turlock. It just kind of depends on where it was at. We tried to, you know, with the collaboration, we've got our Emergency Operations Center at 3705 Oakdale Road. We also, Turlock City has a pretty robust Emergency Operations Center. We have an alternate operations center, so we like to move them around. More than likely, it'd be at one of those, because the communications between them are very easy.
And actually, that's a really good segue into the Elected Officials' Policy Guide for disasters and emergencies, which you have, I think, before you? Okay, good, all right. What that does is, did any of you receive the padfolios? Do you remember the large padfolios that we had? No? Okay, good, because we've done away with those, and we've replaced them with these. Because they're smaller, they're easier to keep and have on hand. The other ones were kind of bulky. But we recently revamped these to include information that was previously provided in the padfolios. And it discusses the elected official's role before, during, and after an emergency. It talks about threat assessment groups, and you know, if there's a threat that's out there and we need to bring in and decide how we're going to handle something, you know, we can do this by conference call, we can do this by meeting face-to-face. And then multi-agency groups, or MACs. It explains NIMS and NIMs and ICS, so you get a feeling of what those are all about. And it outlines the purpose of the Emergency Operations Center and describes the policy group functions and support for your EOC, and I think it's got an org chart in there. Provides information on emergency proclamations and outlines a process and gives you a sample proclamation, and provides disaster response checklists, and ICS 214 Activity Log, which is important. If you're called out on emergency, you need to start tracking your time for reimbursement right away. It also includes helpful disaster preparedness websites and a space for you to add additional websites or important phone numbers that you'd like to have to be able to call. It's also important to know where your emergency operations plans are kept, as well as the supporting plans that are addressed in your plan. So that, all of this would be a really good thing to go through when we do a tabletop exercise and exercise your plan. So, any questions on, on the policy guide?
Nope, we have it here.
Okay, good. All right, so the next little brochure is your Disaster Service Worker brochure. And there's something in the works for this, but it's not quite ready yet, is that right? We've got, that'll be rolling out soon.
The audio is being finalized.
The audio is being finalized, but we'll have a training on this, which will be really great, it'll be available to all the cities. But all government employees, including county and city employees, are disaster service workers by law. And if a city employee is at work when a disaster strikes, they'll be expected to remain on duty until dismissed or relieved. If they're at home when a disaster strikes, they are to ensure the safety of their family and then report to their normal duty station if it's safe to do so, or to the Emergency Operations Center if they have a pre-designed, assigned role there. Employees will receive their normal salary. However, documentation of the work performed, the hours worked, and where the work was performed is essential for the city to seek reimbursement from FEMA and/or the state. The brochure offers a list of ways that an employee should prepare, as well as a list of possible work assignments that an employee may have during a disaster or emergency. And finally, on our newest version, we have a checklist for basic supply kit that everyone should have at home, just in case. And I'm going to add too, it's a good thing to have a to-go bag at your desk, because when we practice our evacuations, people run out to the evacuation spot, and then we ask them, do you have your keys to your car? Well, no. Do you have any medication that you take? Where is it? It's in my purse. Where's your purse? Back at your desk. Practice what you're going to do, because when you practice it, that's when you actually remember to do it. And so it's really important that when you're doing evacuations or any type of practicing that you actually do it if it were a real, live-case scenario. So, more information is available at ready.gov, they have all kinds of things. And upcoming in September, we'll be doing our National Preparedness Month and sending out all kinds of information, so Norma will be getting that, we'll be passing that on, I'm sure. And then October, it's Shakeout for earthquakes, we just have all the fun. Thank you very much. Is there any, any more questions or?
Are there any questions from the public? Any no questions from the public? Do we have a motion on item 6.1?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 6.1.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 6.1.
Council members Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, process for the selection of the next permanent city manager.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the City Council, a special meeting was held last Tuesday night to discuss what the next steps forward might look like in light of my recent resignation to accept a position in Washington State. My last day with the city will be at the end of August, and my last day in the office will be August 25. And so in preparation for that, the City Council did hold a special meeting, as you know, but to bring the public up to speed. Due to the fact that there was a planning commission meeting that night, that meeting was not televised, and therefore, the council asked to bring this back to provide additional direction, to follow up on the discussion that was, that was had. And essentially, a couple of different options were looked at for the selection of the next permanent city manager. And ultimately, the City Council directed Churchwell White and myself to come back to you with a little bit more information on the item, the area, or, excuse me, the process that you preferred. And that was to have a competitive search conducted by Churchwell White. And so at this time, I'd like to hand it over to Tom Hallinan to provide a little update on what he has found out since that meeting last week, and be able to give you a highlight of what a process might look like if Churchwell White did handle the recruitment consistent with your direction last week.
Thank you, Jill. Mayor, Council, just a follow-up on the process last week. I did confirm with my office that we would be able to handle this. And again, we will be doing it pro bono with no cost to the city, other than your hard costs for copying and postage. Our office manager would be coordinating the receipt of applications. We will design, I guess, first design the brochure, and we have an in-house design team already in the office. We have four people basically just work on, on that, because of all the RFPs and things similar to this that we do. We then receive, the office manager would receive the applications, resumes, forward them to the council. You would then winnow them down as you would like, schedule interviews, conduct the interviews, and make your selection, basically.
And the timeframe, are we posting it at her exit?
That's your, your call, and thank you for reminding me. We will obviously post it to the, or Western Cities, probably the special districts website as well, to give a little broader exposure. And anything else you recommend or suggest?
And the first step would be designing the position profile. That could be distributed electronically, as well as in hard copy. And so that might be something, if you'd like, to direct the city attorney to prepare a draft for you to look at, or, and/or provide maybe some key characteristics that you'd like to see in the next city manager with that.
That's a good direction, we'll direct that. But what I would like to do is, again, probably next meeting, since it is 9 August, finalize any of your inputs, so we can determine the date. And I prefer doing it the day that you leave, because something may happen where you decide that we're going to want you around for a little bit longer. Or, I just, I want to make sure that there are clean dates.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, if that's okay with the City Council.
It's fine.
Any objections? So I would like, we all would like to have the input on the brochure, and then ensure that after they're collected, they're forwarded all at one time and not piecemealed out to get where they could get lost. And would they be forwarded to whom, the city clerk?
We forward them just directly to the council, I think.
You can forward them directly to the council? And then we will, I would say that we would then sit down, talk after we review them, figure out how many we want to choose from that, and then we need to get the city clerk involved when we go to the top X number, whether it's 3, 5, 35, however. I'm kidding, they're not going to be 35.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and then we can arrange for that through the, the acting city manager, how we're going to organize the search. Okay? With, of course, the legal team being right there.
Yeah, anticipate having a lot of closed-session meetings with your employment city manager on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir?
Is the public going to be involved in this?
Public will get, no. The public will be involved in the last day after we come down to our final selections, okay? And then you'll be, just like we did the last time?
The last three.
Yeah.
The top three.
Right, because we can't have it disseminated while we're discussing employment contracts.
Of course.
But we will, we will invite, just like the last time, have, have the top three or 35, depending on how many we can't make our mind up about.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And we'll probably do the same venue and format, Team Center, milk and cookies provided by some...
Volunteer group.
Yeah, some volunteer group. Okay? Any other inputs on this? Okay, so August 9, we have a meeting, even though we didn't have one, it's scheduled, because we all approved that tonight. Okay, shall we proceed to item 6.3? Designation of the Voting Delegate and Alternate to Attend the 2016 League of California City Annual Conference. And from, I understand, right now, we have, Darlene, you're going to be going?
Yes.
I'll be going, anybody else?
I am.
Okay. You were the voting member last year, Darlene?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to be the voting member this time?
Yes.
Would you like to be the alternate?
Yes.
Anybody oppose? Okay, we got it.
Okay.
Items? Item 7, 7.1, staff comments, please.
We, we do have to...
Do we have to do the resolution?
Yeah, they request that.
Okay.
A vote, yeah.
All right.
I'll move that we approve item 6.3.
I'll second it.
With Darlene, Barbara Martinez being the primary, Leanne Jones Cruz, and we have a motion to approve and a second.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.1, staff comments.
This evening, we'll, we'll start out with Maricela Garcia, our Director of Finance.
Good evening, I just want to continue inviting our seniors and permanently disabled residents to apply for our utility rate assistance program. Within the past week, I've gotten about 20 applications, so that's very positive news, with 13 of those having been approved already. And so, we do have, we did set a deadline of July 28th, but I will be extending that to August 15th, to allow more time for the residents to apply.
Next up, we'd like to have Norma Torres Menriquez provide a little update on the heat wave and the, the opportunities for people to have to cool down and take care of themselves over the course of the next several days.
Well, it's going to be hot for several days, so anticipated it well into next week. We actually have been working with the Office of Emergency Services, we've had phone calls and, and email exchanges with the state also. Everybody just wanting to make sure that we understand that the heat's here and whatever we can do for our residents, and to put out the information, because ultimately, it's up, up to them to, to come out and stay cool and stay hydrated and just be safe in the heat. But we do have several cool zones in Riverbank, and we make those available to the community to have a place just to have a break from the heat, and then move on to, you know, whatever their daily, their daily activities are. And those are located here in the council chambers, whenever the office is open, this place is available to somebody who needs a little break. The library, which, library has new office hours, they are now closed on Sundays and open on Fridays, so, the library. We have the pool, there is a small cost to that, but the pool's always available. And we have teen center for the appropriate ages, the senior meals at the community center, and the senior activities at the community center are also available. And it doesn't necessarily have to be seniors that go, I mean, anybody can go get cooled off. So, they're, throughout, they're scattered throughout the area, there's always, you know, the opportunity to go shopping, to go to Home Depot and take your dog, and, you know, get them cooled off too, because many of our buildings do not allow you to bring in unless it's a service dog. So, it's mostly putting out information, so it is on our city website, we will be pushing out another Facebook post, just reminding people, these are available if you need them. And then also, just safety tips, stay, you know, hydrated, and take a couple of breaks from the heat, and, and that should be fine. At this time, we're at a stage two, we do have a heat plan that we follow through the county, and we're at a stage two where we're just monitoring. The phone call this morning was included, fire included, the area health department, we look at trends in, from the ambulances and from emergency rooms, as to, is it coming down from, from the heat, or is this just, you know, just, just normal? We also have a lot of input, not just from the weather, the weather group that's at the count, at the state level, but ag. Those are our first indications that, that we're going to be having more issues if, if the ag department comes to tell us, you know, what the animals are being affected, and then, it rolls pretty quickly after that. So again, it's, it's really nice to be part of this team, and we are in constant communication, they do email even if it's after hours, if there's something. And if something like that were to come, I would, I would contact you, but at this time, it thankfully hasn't been there.
Thank you, and thank you for your input.
I, I'm sorry, I have a question, do we have hard copies of the cool zones where they're located?
Hard copies of the cool zones are also located throughout the city, so they're on the bulletin boards, they're at the library. And then, Sue's department has helped us also put them at the various parks, because we, we do have a lot of people that visit the parks. So, we have posted them throughout or wherever we, we could.
I was going to continue, Norma. Make sure that those of, you know, seniors?
Yes.
And also those disabled are checked upon. If you have a neighbor who is senior, I checked on my father today, who prides himself in not using the air conditioning, because he's saving a dollar fifty. So, check on the, on those seniors and those who are disabled.
Yes, absolutely, our sensitive groups, and that's really just neighbors helping neighbors, so we appreciate that.
And then, Annabelle, if that, I'm sorry, are there any more questions for Norma? Okay. Annabelle Aguilar, our city clerk, will give you an update on the election.
So, Mayor, and members of the city council, once again, on Tuesday, November 8th, 2016, is Riverbank's general municipal election. We have the mayor's seat up for election, and also council member district number two, which is council member, Tucker's, council member district number four, which is council member Darlene Barbara Martinez. Currently, the nomination period is open, and it will close on August 12th, and this is the time period where registered voters of the city of Riverbank may take out papers and file papers to run for office. We are by district now, so voters are restricted to electing the candidates within their district. The mayor is at large, so that's citywide, any, any registered voter can nominate and vote for the mayor's seat. If it happens that either council members, Tucker or Barbara Martinez do not file papers, and also the mayor, that means that the nomination period will be extended for that seat. So, that will end on, you'll given five more days, so that will end on Wednesday, August 17th, 5:30 PM. That period is only open to registered voters, it is not open to the incumbents, so your time does end, the incumbents, your time does end on August 12th. Any more, any questions you may have, please visit our website, I'm still working on that, and it's being updated daily. Please call me, 863-7198, or email me, cityclerk@riverbank.org, if you have any questions or need assistance. Thank you.
Finally, Chief Kylie, to provide an update on National Night Out.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'd like to extend an invitation to the entire community to join Riverbank Police Services, August 2nd, at 6:00 PM, at Riverbank Community Center Park, also known as Veterans Park. We are, we're going to stay at that one location, we're going to take a little change in the way that we normally do things, because in the past, we've gone from one neighborhood to another, and basically been spread out to where we get about 10 to 15 minutes with each neighborhood before we have to move on to the next one. And that, we found that that doesn't give us quite enough time to have maybe the depth of conversation that we want to have with people. We might not be as approachable, although our coverage is, is broad, we're just not getting the, maybe the quality that we like to see as far as interaction. So, and sometimes it gets messy, sometimes council members get left behind, and things like that. So, so the idea is to put it, we've had mascots pass out from, from heat exhaustion, and all kinds of collateral damage along the way, so we're trying to simplify the process a little bit, and...
For surety?
Yes. So, by being in the shade with shade trees and on the lawn, and in one location, we're hoping that we can expand the number of activities that we do, and maybe broaden the depth of our contacts. So, we should have the fire department on scene, dive team, bomb team, K-9, my CSO, or community service officer, she's arranged for a water balloon toss. I'm supposed to be involved in that, I'm not sure what the details are, she won't give them to me. So, I'm not sure if there's going to be a circle around me, or how this is going to work. But we'll be doing that, we'll have a bike raffle, the Stars Association has generously donated a bike to be raffled off, it's an adult-sized bike, so a 26-inch bike. But should be lots to do, and, and should be able to have a lot of good conversation, so, any event. That's on our Facebook page, also Riverbank Police Services Facebook page, if anybody needs a reminder, but August 2nd, 6:00 PM, Community Center Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, just one final comment, earlier this evening, we talked about the selection of the, the next permanent city manager, and I just wanted to, for those that may not have heard, that I, I am leaving the city of Riverbank, and it is, it is to advance personally as well as professionally. This has been an incredibly great time in my life, working for all of you and working for the city, and it has been an honor to be a part of it. And I will always be proud of my time here as your city manager. And I, as I have said to numerous, number of you, that Riverbank will always have a special place in my heart, and like to make the most of this final month, and look forward to transitioning responsibilities to a very capable staff. So, thank you very much for this time, and again, look forward to the next month and going from there, but thank you so much for this opportunity.
My understanding, we haven't accepted that resignation.
Any way we can clone Ms. Anderson? Do we have any recourse to do that? No, huh?
Item 7.2, council authority member comments. Council member Leanne Jones Cruz.
I just had two things on my list tonight, I wanted to thank again the members of the Budget Advisory Committee for all their hard work, and encourage folks to participate in that committee, if you would like to have a say in how the city spends their money, it's a, a good opportunity to have your voice be heard, and I just want to thank those folks that come out and participate on that committee. And also, I wanted to also just share, I appreciate the scouts coming out here tonight and asking for our community help, and I would like to thank you for coming and doing that, and hope that we can help you in your venture to keep scouts going in our community, I think it's really important and a good thing for us to do. Thank you.
Council member Campbell?
I'd just like to compliment the county on the job they did in relaying the emergency plan to us. In these times, it's something we all need, and I look forward to having us get parts of it onto the website, like was suggested, so that if an emergency does occur, says just a pipeline breaking under our city, we will know what to do, and the mayor can rest easier with that. But I think you guys have done a great job in condensing it, and we'll look forward to putting it into effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Barbara Martinez, please.
I just have one item, and that is, still, we need to, to conserve our water. It, yes, it's hot, yes, it feels good to water the lawn, but we still need to conserve our water, we're still in a severe drought. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tucker?
Since I'm being repetitive with all the other comments, I'll try and go quickly. I wanted to thank the Budget Advisory Committee, again, for all the work that you do, and have been doing for the past five years, we really appreciate the work of, of the Budget Advisory Committee, all the members, including our city council representative. I wanted to appreciate Chief Kylie's comments about National Night Out and the changes that are proposed and being made, I think it's going to be a really good event, it sounds like a really good change, so I'm excited about that. Wanted to echo what the mayor said about checking on our seniors and our disabled, all the sensitive groups out there during this heat. Please make sure that you check on your neighbor, as, as was said previously, does neighbor helping neighbors, so please do that. And that's about it.
Thank you. Ms. Figueroa, Figueroa, thank you very much for you and your commu, your committee, we appreciate your inputs and your efforts. It reflects greatly on this city what we've been able to do with that committee. There's a couple of things which I've spoken with the city manager about, and I'm just going to list them out, and I think over the next couple of months, or during, you know, over the next couple of months, we take a look at possibly revising the staff's Fridays. They have off every other Friday, and some people don't know, okay, what Friday is it? Is it this Friday, is it next Friday? That we shut the offices down on all Fridays. The Friday that you have available, that you're working, is that you're working on your, the work that you have to catch up on. Also, the municipal codes that are greatly in need of revision and updating. So, I think with the city council, we need to take a look at that, maybe as soon as Jill leaves, we could, you know, get someone to... One of the items also, that I, I'd like us to take a look at, as a city itself, I know everyone abides by the law, and that we have, everyone with a garage sale or yard sale applies for the permit, but on Monday mornings, the signs are all over the place, still hanging up. So, if you're out and about for, whether you're streets or parking wreck, and you see the signs, take them down. I'm not certain if we want to find out where the address is and say, hey, this is yours, would you go pick up about 10 others? But, you know, we, we need to start taking them down. The ribbons from the relay for, for life are still up. It's not unsightly, but it will damage the tree as the tree grows. So, those need to come down. Next Friday, not this coming Friday, but next Friday, I'll be meeting with the downtown businesses. We do have, Darlene, you will be there?
I will.
So, if I have another council member, you go...
I'll be there.
You'll be there? So, we need to have a special meeting, okay? And we'll just throw that on out there, since we'll have three, maybe four.
It depends on what my work schedule is, we have to report back to school next week already, so, and I don't know the Friday schedule yet, so.
Okay.
I will be there if I can.
And this meeting is with the downtown businesses to discuss having an, a business enterprise group or area where we can discuss what, or if anything, we can do downtown to attract businesses, as well as, you know, customers coming on downtown. I think in the next couple of months, we need to take a look at the murals, the arts, and restore and protect them. We had murals that were spray painted about six weeks ago that we were able to clean up. We still have this one guy in a kayak without oars, which kind of makes it hard for him to navigate the whitewater. And that is it for the night, those are things that I am looking at, that we, as a group, need to discuss. And tomorrow, we have a great time with the LAFCO, so all of you want to support or not support the city's movements, we'll be at LAFCO at 6:00 PM tomorrow, in the bottom basement at 1010th Street. With that, go to item 8, 8.1, consistent of public employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957/PROV1, title city manager, director of finance, director of parks and recreation, executive director of the LRA. Item 8.2, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code 54957/PROV1, interim city manager. Item 8.3, conferenceable legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision PROV of Government Code 54956.9, three potential cases. The public are welcome to comment on any of these items before we go into closed session. Is there any public comment? And before I go into public, to closed session, I did want to mention too, for Cub 10 and Scouts 1100, that we will be looking into your requests. With that, closed session.